Okay, I call the April 12th, 2022 Pleasant Ridge City Commission Meeting to order. May we have the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we have roll call?
Mr. Budnick?
Here.
Mr. Lenko?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Schmier?
Here.
Mayor Scott?
Here.
We're up for a public discussion for anyone.
Well, greetings. My name is Senator Marshall Bullock, current Senator for District Four, which is just below Eight Mile, go all the way through southwest Detroit into Lincoln Park, Allen Park, and South Gate. However, during our unique time of the Michigan Independent Redistricting Committee, where I live has been totally flipped, and it is now basically from northwest Detroit to Birmingham. So Ferndale, Royal Oak, Pleasant Ridge, Huntington Woods, Berkeley, Beverly Hills, Oak Park Township, et cetera, is now the potential district that I would like to be the representative for. So I just wanted to make sure I came and introduced myself. You will see me on a regular. I will assist your current legislators in doing whatever it is they need to do to help Pleasant Ridge. Pleasant Ridge is not a stranger to me, being that I'm just below Eight Mile. Ferndale, Pleasant Ridge are places that me and my family partake in the amenities here. We eat here, we socialize here, we have friends here. But me, I have a background in municipal government. I did many years in the city of Detroit mayor office. I am the chairman of the Michigan Legislative Black Caucus. I am the Democratic Pro Tem, Assistant Pro Tem of the Senate. I sit on four committees. I sit on insurance and banking. I sit on transportation and infrastructure. I sit on energy and technology, and I am the vice chair of family, seniors, and veterans. I also sit on three task forces. I was appointed by the governor and the team to the racial disparities for the coronavirus. I was also appointed to child welfare improvement. I have over thirty years of social services and that experience. And then I also was appointed to the Marijuana Regulatory Agency Social Equity Task Force and Equity Task Force in making sure that those cities that opt in or opt out are making sure they're doing things in an equitable manner. I feel like municipalities are much like people. We have more in common than we have differences, and we just prioritize them differently with different nuances. So we work that through, and I'm here to avail myself to you and hopefully be around and be around for many years to help represent you moving forward. So you'll see me on a regular.
Thank you very much.
Any questions for me?
How do people reach you?
Oh, yes. Make sure. I actually sent each of you a note to, you know, introduce myself that way before this physical introduction. This is great to be in public versus a Zoom call, Zoom meeting, or a team meeting, or Google meeting. So that is how everyone gets in touch with me. My chief of staff, Bobby Lawrence, will be here, and I also work tandem with this lovely lady who will then speak her piece.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Hi, I'm State Representative Helena Scott. I currently represent House District Seven in Wayne County, which would be part to Detroit and Highland Park. I have, I'm in my first term, and I am also running to become your state representative in District Seven. As you all know, we've gone through redistricting, and now District Seven goes across Eight Mile into Oakland County, Ferndale, Royal Oak Township, Royal Oak, and also Pleasant Ridge. As far as my experience, like I said, I've been in the State House a year and a half. I currently sit on energy, communications, technology, and financial services. I'm also part of the Detroit delegation. I am the, on their executive board, I serve as their secretary. I also am part of several committees. I started a legislative care caucus in the State House focusing on care workers to uplift their really professionalism and pay. As we all know, that a lot of those care workers are minority women, and they are undervalued and underpaid, and I thought that would be something that we need to recognize and highlight in the State House as we all age. We're all going to get older, hopefully, if we don't with this pandemic. And so we want to make sure that we are protected as we age, and I want to develop policy for that. I'm also part of the Michigan Legislative Black Caucus. Senator Bullock is the chair. I'm part of the Progressive Women's Caucus, and just really looking to come here tonight to introduce myself to you and really ask for your support. I've already met with your esteemed mayor, Brett Scott, and he has offered up his endorsement to me, and I'm very pleased and happy about that. And I look forward to really sitting down with each and every one of you and getting to know you better and finding out what your issues and concerns are here in Pleasant Ridge, and hopefully gaining your endorsement and your support as well.
Thank you.
And I do have...
How do people reach you?
Yes. You gotta give me something.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I'll give you my business card.
Thanks.
For the campaign.
Sure.
Great.
No relation, by the way.
I was gonna say, wait.
Not that we know. It's Detroit. You never know.
Hi, Mayor Scott and Commissioners, thank you for letting me be here tonight. I am Deb Hemmy, and I am the new library director of your library, the Huntington Woods Library.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you. I'm assuming that you all know that you have a contractual agreement with, okay, just want to be sure that you knew that's why that is your library. We do have two Pleasant Ridge residents on our library board. I just want to tell you briefly a couple of things that we're doing. There's a lot of things, but what I hope that you'll see in the next few months is a new website, possibly new hours, seven days a week, new services, yeah, we're trying, new services, and just making the library easier to navigate and find what you need. I'm working, tomorrow night I'll be going to the Huntington Woods Anti-Racism Committee meeting, and together we're planning a Juneteenth celebration, and we hope to be doing more of that. If Pleasant Ridge has a similar type committee that I could connect with, I would love to do that. If not, then you'll just see what we come up with. I would also like to bring the library to Pleasant Ridge, and I'm told that back in the day, they had a couple Storytimes here. They're not doing it anymore, so I'm guessing maybe it didn't work out.
No, I don't know. My wife loves the Storytimes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, that was back in the day. That was a long time ago, so I'd like to give it another try, but if you think of any other ideas, I really would love to have more outreach here and have more of a presence of the library here in Pleasant Ridge. I will be doing a community survey in the next month, month and a half, and with your permission, I would like to survey not only the residents of Huntington Woods, but also the residents of Pleasant Ridge. So if that works well. I have one request, and maybe it's not appropriate to put it before you right now, I don't know. I would love to be able to come here every other month, go one month to Huntington Woods City Council and one month here if you are interested in being kept up to date on library happenings.
Yes, please.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Great. That is, thank you.
And Mary Foreman has been doing a really nice job. She'll come in sometimes too and update us, or she'll feed us information, and she's great about putting it up on Facebook and making sure that, you know, in our ridger and...
Your ridger is fantastic. It's really nice. I'm very jealous.
So it's a fun, yeah, it's, people just love the work you guys are doing. Thank you so much.
Great. Good to hear.
As far as, is it gonna be mailed out, or do you think it's gonna be...
No, I want to do it, I want to do it email. I mean, I guess I would see us having paper copies at the library for people who want that, but I was planning electronic. Is that, do you think that's a problem?
We may have a listserv kind of a thing to share.
Oh, perfect.
To get everybody, I don't know. That's something.
That would be, that would be fantastic.
And we could certainly keep paper copies here.
Okay. Oh, perfect.
For people, we don't know what percentage of our population don't have the internet.
Okay.
Probably really low now, but we don't know.
And maybe your rec center as well? Okay.
Someplace here.
That'd be great. That'd be great.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, congrats.
Of course. No problem.
Nice to meet you.
Anything else for public discussion? All right, we'll move on to the liaison reports. Mr. Budnick, please. Commissioner Budnick.
Thank you, Mayor. So April Recreation Happenings, number one camp registration is still open, so hop on it. Field trips are on a waitlist status at this time, however, if you are interested, please add your child to the waitlist for no cost. Fifty and up bingo Thursday, April 21st at 6:00 PM. The cost is a whopping $7. That's a deal. Taco bar dinner and fun provided. Pre-register by the 14th, which is tomorrow.
No, Thursday.
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 Thursday. Mother's Day, Mother Daughter Henna is available on Saturday, May 9th, from 9:00 to 12:00, 9:00 AM that is, Community Center Patio, and this is $17 per couple. Pre-register for a slot. Leaders in Training, LIT, for residents in seventh grade and older that would like to volunteer this summer. Applications are available at the front desk now and must be turned in by May 12th. Signups for water aerobics, exercise classes, and the Synchro Show, which is always a hit, are available online or in person. And last, the April through June ridger was delivered to mailboxes, so check inside for upcoming activities. Says to please hold up. So this ridger, yeah, this ridger was pretty thick, so a lot of content in this one, very excited about it, and a lot of good info in here. And thank you, Shawnee and Greg, for preparing this as always and for all you do.
Yes, thank you.
Pleasure. Thanks, Mayor.
You're welcome. On to Commissioner Lenko. Schools.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right, so schools want to make everybody aware that Ferndale School Board publishes their meetings on YouTube. I recommend people watch them. April 18th is the next one. Big news, you'll have noticed CASA groundbreaking at the elementary school last week, super cool. Less excellent, but good for her. Superintendent Ozzy is moving on, and the school board is creating a search committee to find the next, to find her replacement. So there'll be loads of updates on this. Yeah, all good stuff, and April 18th is the next school board meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Ms. Perry. Commissioner Perry.
Thank you, Mayor. On Monday, May 2nd, 7:00 PM, the Planning Commission and DDA are going to meet here at City Hall. This, they'll be discussing, my guess is they'll do some updates on the Woodward Streetscape discussion and things like that. We'll see. But, so join us if you can, and otherwise, there'll be minutes and we'll update you on what happened in the meeting. But, yeah, DDA will meet on Monday, May 2nd. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. And Commissioner Schmier.
Thank you, Mayor.
Historical commission.
Historical. Okay, so home and garden tour at this point is penciled in for September 17th. We are still, let me actually rephrase that, not home, garden and garden sanctuary, so it is gonna be outside. If anyone is interested, please reach out. We are still looking for homes. If you're even considering it, reach out, and we can talk more about it. Museum is open April 16th, 10 to noon, and that's Saturday. The museum will also, starting in May, be opened from 6:30 to 7:30 on Tuesdays, right before the commission meeting. So for anyone who is coming to the commission meeting and would like to stop in the museum, that will be open starting in May through the summer. And that is all I have this week, or this month, so thank you.
Thank you. All right, governmental reports.
I think I'm the only one.
I think you're the only one this, from our police.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, staff, residents.
And distinguished guests.
The fire chief had sent an email at a prior engagement, but I don't think she had anything to report for this month. She's sorry she couldn't attend, looking forward till next month. I'm gonna start with an animal issue. Each year, each summer, actually, the Open County Animal Control Division conducts a census to ensure compliance with the Michigan State Dog Law of 1919 that requires all dogs have a license. So licensing an important public safety issue has ensures that the dogs residing in our community have proper vaccinations and rabies shots and stuff. It also provides a license that city staff or anywhere, because it's through the county, can look up and we can locate an owner, and all the informations, who their vet is, things like that. Also, if the dog has a chip maybe, so you can scan it and then, because anybody that has animals, no, they all can get loose or out and stuff, usually at the most opportune time, and it helps us identify these animals. If they are involved in possibly a bite or a scratch situation, then we can check the license and assure people right off the bat that, yes, the dog is vaccinated, although there's still probably be a quarantine period and things like that. The county wanted us to make our residents aware, so there's no penalty or fee, because the price changes after a certain date, which I get to, but people can purchase dog license from staff here, or at many of the veterinary offices, and at the county facility on Telegraph in Pontiac. Dog licenses are typically, it's $15 for a dog that's been spayed or neutered, and $25 for a dog that has not. After June 2nd, though, that price goes up to $40. So they don't want people to pay more, they wanted people to be aware and get to that. They also do a census, and people go door to door where they know a dog has not been licensed and not to remind people and stuff. Now, people have complained in the past that the census should be conducted prior to the dog license expiring, but the people that they're getting are volunteers, usually college students, staff, and they're still in school, and that's the only time they can conduct a census. So they try their best, but that's what they're doing. So just remind everybody that your dog must have a license. You can get licenses here. The cost is minimal, and it does help identify and solve a lot of problems for us.
And just for clarification, how often do you have to renew your license? Every time the rabies is up?
So it depends. We sell through the county, one-year and three-year licenses, and it has to do with when the rabies expires.
Okay.
So you can get a license that expires in 2022, or one that expires in 2025, depending on your rabies.
Okay, great. Thank you.
No more questions about that. Surrounding communities and countywide continue to have thefts of catalytic converters is the number one thing. If you've seen any videos or whatever, watched the news, or get the opportunity to see a lot of videos of this, and these people are very good at what they do, they have cordless sawzalls, they're now targeting car lots where they're getting multiple. They're also, apparently, the price for commercial catalytic converters, probably due to the size, are worth more, so they're targeting commercial trucks. So we haven't had a catalytic converter theft in several months, but other communities around are finding that they are. They're also having a lot of larceny from vehicles, again, mostly in unlocked cars rifling through for change. Many people leave their key fob. I don't know why the manufacturers put a spot in there for that key fob in your car to make it easy for you, but we have video of crews driving down the road, looking for unlocked car doors, popping out, jumping in, stepping on the brake, pushing the button, and if the key's in there, they're gone. If not, they rifle through for valuables. So please, as I say every month, lock your doors before you go to bed at night and check.
And it's not a theft if you've given them the keys.
Correct. Actually, maybe you should be charged as a accomplice.
There was a term, though. I forgot the term from the email like a couple months ago.
Yeah, I forgot.
Yeah. That was a new term for me, like...
Was it?
Right, it was...
Have to look up what it was.
Yeah, it was some sort of like, right, theft without, like, it was negligence or something, yeah, I'll look it up, but yeah.
Okay to repeat that term in a public meeting? It's...
Yeah, no, no, it was like, what you called it.
Because the terms I were thinking were not...
Right, exactly, exactly. Like, keys in the car.
And lastly, remind people that we're doing a second Coffee with the Cops. That will be Tuesday, May 3rd at 6:30 PM. We had a smaller-than-what-we-expected showing at the last one. Hopefully now, I don't know how you say that, and then COVID numbers will go up again or whatever, but we're doing it again. We can do it, it's in the big room, we can have space, and if need be, and we'll go on the current COVID guidelines at the time. But Tuesday, May 3rd at 6:30 PM. Okay?
I think the timing will help. Last one was during the day.
It was earlier, and I think a lot of people...
It was like 9:00 AM.
Yeah. Most people drink coffee.
Absolutely.
So that's all I have, unless there's questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I think we'll just move on to the consent agenda. Might have a motion about it.
Mayor, I move the consent agenda be approved.
For the second?
Second.
Any discussion? Maybe take a vote, please.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmier?
Yes.
Commissioner Budnick?
Yes.
Commissioner Lenko?
Yes.
Mayor Scott?
Yes. The motion carries. And now we'll move on to the water infrastructure Citizens Advisory Committee recommendation.
Thank you, Mayor. Very briefly, we, the Citizens Advisory Committee has delivered their final report. They delivered a unanimous approval for that report and recommendation to the city commission. We have James Vetrino, the facilitator, and also Kate Kokotovich is here, chairperson of the Citizens Advisory Committee, and I'm gonna turn it over to them.
Well, thank you very much for allowing us to be here. Hopefully had an opportunity to review the report in advance. Our main goal is to answer any questions that you may have. Overall, the process was really good from my perspective. I hope that the report really provided you with an idea, if you were able to attend, that it was consistent with what you saw, and if you were unable to attend or unable to watch, that it gave a clear path of how the CAC got to where they ultimately got to. We had the opportunity, which isn't always the case, but I was really appreciative that Kate and the others could review it in advance of it being published, and in fact, we had an opportunity to come together for one final meeting, pull the report up on the screen and just kind of go through it and make sure that it fairly conveyed what the whole committee had suggested during our conversations, which, to me, that's the best way to do this, because you're not hearing a report necessarily from me, it's instead from the whole CAC. So I'm primarily here for questions. I'm happy to go over a high-level presentation of what the recommendations are, more for the public, since you've already had an opportunity to review it, but I'll ask if Kate wants to share anything, and then ask you how you would like to proceed.
I just want to say that, just, I was really grateful for the participation by all the other committee members and for City Manager Bruckman and James for their assistance and guiding us through the issues and the, and coming to, coming to an agreement on our recommendations. So I think that, you know, there's, no one's really excited about paying a lot of money to fix water infrastructure, but I think that what came out of the meeting was something that, you know, there's something for everybody.
So at this point, if you think it'd benefit for me to just give a very high-level review of the recommendations, I'm happy to do that. I see some nods.
Yeah. If I may just take a step back.
Yes, please. For those that are not familiar, like every community in Michigan, Pleasant Ridge is grappling with the removal of lead from its water infrastructure, but at the same time, we've been very fortunate that the city sits on a bed of sand. So we haven't really needed to replace our water mains ever. I mean, there have been a few fixes and repairs that we've had to make, but we've basically had the same water main structure for almost 100 years, if not over. So that's an incredibly fortunate thing for us, except when everything needs to be replaced all at once, or at least on a schedule. And so that's where we're at now. We've realized that with the lead service line replacement and the need to replace water infrastructure, the other pieces of the water infrastructure, the water mains, it was good to have a millage. We got a vote in favor of a millage last fall, but we wanted to confirm with residents how to, how to include that in billing, because there are several levers that we could pull to receive funds from the residents. So that's what brought us to the CAC action and the recommendation. Great, thank you. And the commission appointed 12 members, 11 participated in the full process, and we had very high attendance at all of our meetings throughout. The goal was to fund about $880,000 on an annual basis. Those numbers were provided to the CAC. It was presented that the amount was about what it would be. There's engineers' estimates for it to be confirmed, and we've got notes on that, but that was the amount. This is the project. Here are the opportunities for raising that revenue. And I'll have to say that the city manager's tool was invaluable. We got to use that tool where we could raise and lower the different types of rates, starting at that very first meeting. There were 16 different combinations of rates that were tested and discussed by the CAC during meetings, but they brought information both from conversations they had with members of the public, but also using the tool on their own time, trying to figure out which, how the levers could be most fair. I'll make a comment on fairness. Our very, our second meeting, we had a narrative conversation about fairness and what does fairness mean in this context. As you would expect, there is a wide spectrum of fairness, particularly when it comes to who shall pay what, or how a calculation shall be made, but we tried to document that in the report and have that conversation proceeding, those 16 combinations of different rates, just so we could have it as a baseline. The ultimate recommendations was that the three types of rates, originally we had four, but there was three types of rates that they shot, that the CAC thought would most appropriately fund the project, those being the, an annual front foot charge, or front foot charge, that length in front of one's property in a linear feet, a rate based on that, a flat rate per bill, so just a flat rate that would be a ready-to-serve fee, and then a portion of the millage that was authorized by the voters. Again, 16 rate different combinations. Ultimately, they sell on a relatively straightforward rate of a third, a third, a third, or 33% of the revenue necessary, coming from each one of those rates, with a caveat that the front foot be limited to only 100 feet, so that there be a cap on it. Throughout the, for those of you that had an opportunity to observe, and certainly anyone that followed it, a lot of conversation about tails, and it wasn't dogs and licenses. It was the ends of histograms. So, and if you think of a bell curve, those that pay the most out here and those that pay the least out here, and then in the middle you have those higher number of individuals that will pay a certain amount, and the goal was to, particularly on the high end, how do we contain those tails and bring it so, so we can get everything towards the middle? What's interesting, when you have two different histograms, one based on the percentage increase that one will have, and one based on the dollar amount increase one will have, they work in opposite. So as you change the formulas, you will tighten your tails on one and extend your tails on the other. This one-third, one-third process was found to be a really good blend of the two. Also, about one-third of the cost of, or the estimated cost is related to the lead lines, and they thought that tying that lead lines to that ready-to-serve fee was, or the RTS, was a good tie, that that was just in the system, where the other two fees would be more that variable cost to do the upgrades or the replacements from the very old lines. They also considered the other question, so one question that you had for them was, how would you divide up the rates? The second question was, if we receive grant funding or some external funding, I should step back. Their charge was only consider internal funding, so we couldn't punt. Be very nice to have been able to punt and say, just go find the other amount by grant, and that was not something that was given them as an option. But through the process, and I'm sure the city managers informed you, you did receive one grant already, and maybe there'll be more, just depends on the funding. This is a project that will last over several years. But as that grant funding is applied to the project through your budgeting process, the suggestion was not to change that one-third, one-third recommendation, or one-third, one-third, one-third funding proportionality. So you would apply the grant funding, and then it would adjust those different rates or charges down by whatever amount, but it continues that each provide a third of the cost for the project. I thought this was really good. We, I won't say we stumbled on it. I didn't realize early when we started talking percentages as opposed to dollars or millage amounts, that as we progressed through and we got to talking about, how about adjusting, that talking it about... that talking it about how much each of the rates should provide as a percentage as opposed to the millage shall be 1.74, provides you, hopefully, if you accept the recommendation, that flexibility and knowledge that you are, you are hearing what the CAC says even as you go forward and have to make the numbers different, but as long as each, each component of the rate is providing a third of the, the needed revenue, you're staying consistent with the CAC's recommendation. I thought that, that, that worked, worked well. There's also the inverse that the CAC talked about. If your engineers' estimates are low or costs continue to rise or inflation changes and loan rates are different than what they may be today, that the same philosophy would apply. The additional revenue need would be received through a one-third, one-third, one-third proportionality, again, keeping those rates and amounts in proportion to each other to generate either the more revenue that you need in the case of an increase or the less in the case of a, a grant. The report includes all the minutes from the meetings. I hope I've fairly reflected what has happened through the summary and in the written document, and I'm happy to take any questions.
The only thing I would add before you take any questions is there is a document library online, which was available throughout the process and remains. So, anything that the CAC looked at, anything that was provided to them, any of the background information is all available there, as is the final report. You can access that at cityofpleasantridge.orgbackslashCAC.
Thank you. Yes, thank you for your help. And then thanks to everyone that participated on the CAC. I see two others in the back. It was just following, and I followed it on, online while the meetings were going, and the process was just incredibly orderly and very thoughtful. I could tell everyone brought their opinions to the table in a very nice manner, and it, and the result is one that I could say, yeah, I can understand that. So, and it's easy for me to explain to everyone the logic behind it, so it just makes sense to me. And also, thanks to our legislators in Lansing for helping out wherever you can to bring the number down for us, please. But it's been really good, so I'm, I'm very happy with how it turned out. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I also wanted to just thank everyone. I mean, I attended a few. I watched all of them, and I thought all of the committee members were, I was just impressed by the dedication and by the clear work that people were doing on their own time, looking into it. You know, no one was taking it lightly, and it was great to watch, and I really appreciated all of it. So, thank you. Thank everyone.
And I'll just echo that. Right, 12 people, five meetings. That's awesome. Consensus is not easy, so I very much appreciate that. Super cool. Good work. Thank you. Sure, yeah. I, yeah, I would, I enjoyed reading the report. It was robust. And for a complete neophyte like me, I could follow it, and that was important. I, anybody that had no prior knowledge of this could follow that from start to finish, and it would at least make sense. And it provided so much context and detail. And I too enjoyed listening to the deliberations and seeing it all massaged down because you'd get somewhere and then someone would, you know, pose a question, well, what about this? And it, I really enjoyed seeing really talented, smart people of our community working on this and really taking a vested interest in a, in a not-so-fun topic. So, I, I too appreciate it, and thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
The, I, yeah, I want to, to also thank you all. And, you know, to James and Jim, all of the work you guys did to help really facilitate amazing conversations. It was impressive how deeply people went into the different things and really just searched and dug into, like, different questions that they were hearing from their neighbors as well as questions they had had. You know, this was something, it was an important, big topic for the city. And so, I think anyone who has questions about, you know, the initial millage and then where we're ending up, the great thing is, it is all available online to look at. And that tool that, that everyone was able to dig into and play with, it was fun to hear all of, you know, everyone's feelings about how they felt, you know, what, what ended up being fair. And it, the discussions were really interesting, and it was great because they were so civil. I watched one of the meetings online, which was a ton of fun. It was almost like a sports thing. The camera coverage was so fun that it, it's like it would zoom in on each person. But it, it was. It was super fun to follow along, and I loved hearing, you know, these were, there were a lot of people on the committee that none of us knew. And, you know, you know, there was a lot of work to figure out different, you know, taxable values and things like that because we wanted to make sure it was really representative. And, you know, we still didn't end up with a perfect mix of representation, but I think that answer, it's a really good solution. But thank you all. It was, it was a fun, weird little sporting event type thing to watch from, from our end because we're into that stuff all the time, and I think it got a lot more of you into it as well. So, thank you.
Whether you wanted to be or not.
Right. Exactly.
Cool. Well, I, I think we need a motion.
Your honor, I move the report by the Water Infrastructure Citizens Advisory Committee recommendation be received and filed.
Second that. Any other comments? I guess I'll just add one. Our process now is, we've received this, and if it is, it's received and filed, we take that into consideration as we're working through our budget. We'll, we'll present the budget to everyone in May, and we'll let everybody know our, our outcome. I think we've all really enjoyed the, the process and understand and appreciate the, the output. Any other comments before we vote? Do we have a vote?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Lenko?
Yes.
Commissioner Budnick?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmier?
Yes.
Mayor Scott?
Yes, the motion carries.
Thank you, guys.
Yes, thank you.
Damien, those pants rock.
I just wish I had it. All right, on to goals and objectives.
Yes.
Cool.
Okay, the City Commission annually goes through a process to review your goals and objectives. It's the kickoff to the budget process. They set your high-level expectations for what the City Commission wishes to accomplish, what we, what we'd like to move forward as a city together. They're the basis for making budget, budget decisions and work priorities for city staff throughout the year. And when we consider various projects and funding decisions during the budget process, you can evaluate those against your stated goals and objectives. Those are attached in your packet. The requested action is your consideration and adoption of those goals and objectives for fiscal year 2023.
Thank you. I think we need a motion.
Mayor, I move that the fiscal year 2023 City Commission Goals and Objectives Statement be, be approved.
I second.
Thank you. Any comments? Yes, please.
Thank you so much for this process. I mean, I think it's a process that helps us all look, you know, very, at things at different levels, you know, from a very high level, but then also like into the details of what, you know, each of us would like, how we would like to see the city move forward or what to make sure that we are taking care of and, and nurturing along. So, thank you. I thought the process worked really nicely, and it's a great list. Thanks.
Now, we're fortunate that from year to year, a lot of the top priorities don't change that much, but there are things that influence the work that we do, like the water infrastructure project is one. That's, it's just a lot of money. We should take some great care in making sure that people are clear on it and make it a priority. COVID affected our priorities just to make sure that we had safe operating conditions and, and because we're Pleasant Ridge, you know, how do we open the pool? And what do we do for recreation? All of these things are important. So, likewise thankful for the list. Thanks to everyone.
Thank you.
I think we're ready for a vote.
Commissioner Schmier?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Budnick?
Yes.
Ms. Lenko?
Yes.
Mayor Scott?
Yes, the motion carries. And we're up to the city manager's report.
Yeah, I have some updates. There's some, it's spring is springing, and that means construction season is also upon us. Woodward Heights, we do have the contract finalized for that study, so we'll be wrapping that up in the next day or two, and we'll work to get a start date for that project soon. So, once, once that starts to get rolling, we'll communicate out to residents on Woodward Heights and throughout the city as a whole what that process is going to look like and how it'll proceed. Even if you don't live on Woodward Heights, I think that our consultant brings a wealth of information and knowledge, and they're going to have things that are transferable throughout the city besides some Woodward Heights-specific recommendations that they're going to have. We do have the Woodward projects. These are the Streetscape and Cycle Track project northbound Woodward, and then the, the 696 to 8 Mile Collaborative Project with Ferndale. Those are both going to start in late summer or early fall. So, those will be some, some more construction work around. 696 is going to be reconstructed starting next year from Lasher to Dequinder. So, just when you thought we were getting done with 75.
Oh.
That makes sense, actually, yeah.
Get ready.
Yeah.
It never ends. For those 20% of our residents who had a hole dug in their front yard for the lead service line verification, restoration, restoration work has begun. They were in town starting yesterday, and they've been doing restoration work. So, that will be wrapped up soon. We also have restoration for the concrete work, for the sewers, the repairs that were done on Oakland Park, also over on Elm Park, as Chris knows, for a while now. That, concrete work should be starting soon as well to do the permanent repairs for those, hopefully by the end of the month. We're also going to be doing some extra concrete repair work just to get some of the other non-construction-related but deteriorating concrete areas. We're going to address some of those. We'll also be doing the spray patching again, too. It's basically, you know, asphalt spray patching that plugs up the, the various small holes we have around town in the concrete.
That works really well.
It does. It usually lasts anywhere from three to six years. So, it's very cost-effective, and it really prolongs the life of the road without having to do full concrete repair, which is much, much, much more expensive. And finally, the drinking water state revolving loan fund application that we have to help fund, hopefully, the water infrastructure project. That application process is continuing. You may have heard that Senate Bill 565 got approved and signed into law by the governor. That is making some extra. I think it's 750 million that's allocated for drinking water improvements. So, ideally, that will help with hopefully finding some funds for us. It's unknown if that is going to be for fiscal year 23 or a future year when that actually gets allocated out. So, as always, it's, it's, it's signed into law, but we don't know. So, we'll find out soon enough. We are waiting. There's going to be preliminary scoring that we're waiting on from Eagle on our application. That'll give us an idea of kind of where we stand in terms of our likelihood for getting funding and particularly grant funding, which is what we really want out of that revolving loan fund process. So, once we get that, we'll finalize our application and hopefully be one step closer to, you know, wrapping that up. If we do get funding through the drinking water revolving loan fund, what it will do is allow us to, one, get some grant money from the state for the work to lower our cost, but then also to be able to do the work quicker, to be able to accelerate the project and instead of having to pure pay as we go for this over the course of 25 years. Accelerate the work. Would rather have the work done quickly. The payments will be for some time, but we want to get new water mains and good non-led service lines for everybody in the community as fast as we can. So, that's where we stand on that. I'll have more updates as we progress and learn more through that sort of slow-rolling process.
Right.
And if anyone has any questions about anything else going on in town?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
With the, with the lead service line, the work that we're going to do on Kensington, that we're not anticipating, when do you anticipate that starting?
Yes, good question. So, that was going to be this fall, but now since we got the $650,000 federal earmark towards that project, which is helping to offset a $400,000 shortfall in our water fund revenues this year because it was so rainy last year, nobody irrigated, and we have a shortfall in funds from that. We're, we now have to wait for that federal funding process. So, we don't know yet when we get that money, how we get that money. There's some extra bidding requirements now.
Okay.
So, there's, there are a bunch of hoops we have to jump through because it's federally funded that are going to delay the start of that project.
Okay.
I don't know yet when that's going to start.
Okay.
We're, we're, we're still hoping for a fall start. It may be spring 2023 before that project starts.
Okay.
So, the good and the bad of federal money.
Right.
Mostly good.
All good.
Little bit bad.
Yeah.
And we'll keep everybody informed as we have more information on the start date for the Woodward projects. We know there's a lot of interest in just knowing how the traffic's going to flow and if there's any, you know, interruptions or strangeness as a result of that construction. And, yeah, we'll let everybody know. We don't know yet exactly.
Right. Great.
Mayor?
Yeah?
Jim, I did have one question, and I apologize if you've answered this before. Now that we know roughly how many lead lines we have, was that part of the application, the percentage of lead lines in the community?
So, it, it, it was. We went on our preliminary number, and then we got that
Yeah.
hard and fast number during the application process, and we have definitely communicated that because 75% of our lines are lead now that we know. And most of that is on the public side.
Right, yes.
About half of our service lines on the private side are lead. But then, because we haven't had to change a water main, you know, a lot of people have changed their private side service lines. But the public has always been responsible for the public side, from the main to the stop box at the sidewalk. And, you know, that requires digging up the street, and it's, it's the most expensive part of the process. So, yes, we have communicated that. We have made sure that the state knows that number for the scoring process.
Great.
Thank you.
Because 75% is a lot.
That's got to be an outlier.
Yeah, I mean, Royal Oak has the same number of lead service lines that we do. 57,000 more people than we have.
Yeah.
Wow.
Crazy.
The downside of having great plumbing for 100 years.
Yeah, incidentally, we were, I was meeting, I was meeting with Royal Oak as part of our water maintenance changeover, and we, they asked, when was, how many water main breaks we get every year with Oakland County? And we said, well, the last one we had, I think, was in 2008. And everyone said, what?
Isn't that weird? So close and yet so different.
Yeah, and Royal Oak, I mean, they have four water main breaks a day during the winter. And it's all, it's all down to the soils. They're all on the clay, and we're all in Santa.
Yeah.
That's, that's 100% of the difference.
Yeah, it's wild.
So, with our, while we do have a lot of lead service lines, how is our water quality?
Our water quality has been unfailingly excellent.
Awesome.
Last year, our 90, our 90th percentile lead result was, I think, 4.7 parts per billion. The state limit is currently 15, and the federal limit is 15 parts per billion. The state's reducing that to 12 parts per billion starting in 2025. So, we've been around 4.5 to 5.5 for our parts-per-billion results, 90th percentile.
Even though we have 75% lead pipes, that's remarkable.
Yeah, and
Sand.
And people at home, because often a bad test is a result of somebody not being home. They run the water, I'd imagine.
Right, and a lot of times bad tests are actually interior plumbing. Some of the communities around us have had some really crazy results ping. Lead wasn't allowed to be used in interior plumbing fixtures, but China could still import ones made with lead up until, I think, 2015 or 2016. So, one of the things you need to be cognizant of is your interior. And even if you have copper inside, you know, the, the
Spigot.
The faucet, the faucet
Yeah.
can have lead that, you know, impacts that.
That's a good thought.
Wow.
Yeah.
I'm very impressed you knew those numbers that specifically. It's like, because I did not ask you that question. Wow.
I wish I didn't.
I know. Thank you, though.
Yes.
Yes, thanks. Any other? No?
No.
All right, I think we're on to other business. Any other business?
The only thing I had, Mayor, was, you know, it's spring, and so now we can put the yard waste bags out, and we can, if you have another container that you want to put yard waste in, there are stickers. Are, do you have them at the rec center?
I don't have any.
They have them here at City Hall, so you can put them on there. So, the Tringali will know what to, what to grab. So, feel free to come by and get them if you need any, you know, you can reach out to your commissioners, and we can help get them to you, too.
It's funny, one of the things I learned is that it's really hard to throw away a trash can. I ended up having to put a label on it so that the trash folks knew.
Please take me.
It's funny, I had the exact same experience once, like, I couldn't. Yes, they just went, yes.
Yep. I did have one thing I forgot to mention. Thank you, Chris. This year, we are trying something new. We have signs that we're working on ga- Uh, we have signs that we're working on getting order that we're gonna hang up. But we're gonna try setting specific dates for street sweeping this year.
Hmm.
Uh, we bought the street sweeper a couple of years ago. Last year, we spent a lot of time getting it uh, reliably operational.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we got a great deal on it, we bought it for ten thou- We bought it for ten thousand from Hazel Park, and a new street sweeper's like two hundred and twenty-five thousand.
It was almost a Bravo TV special.
Does look like a Zamboni.
There's a shoe.
They do, yeah.
There is a shoe.
That's great.
We've, we've replaced almost every single hydraulic hose on it, so we're, we're confident in it now. Knock on wood. So we're gonna do the, I think, the fourth Wednesday and Thursday of the month. Uh, we're setting two days, and we're asking, we're gonna ask everyone, please don't park on the street on those days. Uh, one of them's a rainy day, in case it rains on the one day, we can then back it up to the next day. So uh, the more cooperation we can get from residents, keep your cars off the streets, the better job we can do, making sure that we get everything. Um, and get the streets cleaned up well those days.
You know, I have had a resident reach out to me, because it, for some reason, one specific area, it must be the kind of tree that's there, gets really just dirty and stuff in the spring. And um, ironic, he was asking when street sweeping was starting, and um, it happened to be, Tim was out there that day.
Yes.
Uh, driving around. And it, you know, this, our, our um, wonderful ten thousand dollar street sweeper does a great job.
I've seen it on Devonshire.
Yeah, we, we plan on trying to, during months, you know, the spring and the fall, when there's more stuff falling or after storms. We plan on doing additional sweeps, as best, you know, beyond that third and fourth Wednesday, Thursday.
Yeah.
Um, those are just the days we want everyone to make sure they don't park on the street, but we'll be doing it more.
That's great.
Yeah, we have a, a great piece of equipment we have.
Show it off.
Yeah.
That's great. Thank you. Thanks.
Mayor, I just wanted to thank again um, Representative Scott and Senator Bullock for, for making the trip.
Yeah.
Appreciate you very much, really do, and all the work you do in, you know, Lansing, so.
We see us on regularly.
Appreciate it.
I have ideas for a lot of what was discussed today and some of the stuff I read in your forum.
Oh, good.
So.
Anytime.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Greg Humphries is my chief of staff and legislative director, so you'll be sitting with him.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi, nice to meet you. Yeah. Excellent, I think that is it. We have a motion to adjourn.
Move we adjourn.
Second.
That's a wrap. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.